All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order 6:31. Nice to see everyone, thank you for being here. On our consent agenda, we have the prior minutes from the April meeting and a number of policy reads. A first read on F15, E3, D2, D9, those second reads, and then the informational only. Any discussion about prior minutes and policies, questions? So I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, we'll do that by roll. Miranda?
Aye.
Arlene?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
John, can you hear us?
Yes.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I don't know, Erin, are you able to hear us? You're muted.
I'll see if she can...
All right. Well, motion passes, and hopefully we can figure out what's going on with Erin. So, recognition of visitors, I mean, I know we have a number of students here for our spotlight. Morgan, anyone else in the virtual round visitor-wise for public comment?
Nope.
All right, anyone else here for public comment, or all for the school spotlight? School spotlight, okay, perfect. All right, great. So that brings us to our school spotlight, Sandy?
Student names, did I read them?
Oh, sorry, after.
Yeah, okay. All right, so Jake Hartman, our middle school math teacher, put together this presentation with the students tonight, and we decided to kind of give the board and visitors a bird's eye view of what our students do for their PLPs. And so, since it has to be like fifteen, twenty minutes, it's gonna be that in the nutshell version, and I'm not gonna talk too long, I'm gonna turn it right over to Jake, so I don't waste any of the time.
Ron? No feedback?
No.
Well, welcome all, thank you for having us. So, as Principal Alexander said, we're here to share a little bit about what goes on in our middle school, and we decided to use, they just did their student-led conferences this spring, which they did their own personalized learning plans, and they presented those to a number of people at the camp, that's for sure. So our presenters are Hannah, Bethany, Liliana, and Vienna, and you'll get to hear from them in just a minute. So this is the parts of their learning plan that they complete throughout the year, and then they put it together as a summary right before this presentation. So they're regularly revisiting all parts of this plan throughout the school year. And what this, the idea of this plan, what we're trying to accomplish with our students, is it is highlighting, you know, a culmination of their personal reflection on their learning, and really dig into the metacognition piece of them as learners, so that they can hopefully bring a lot out of that, and identify, and we'll see some of our examples. They're very nice. So they're twenty-minute presentations, and as we found out this year, that they did such a thorough job that we actually had, a lot of them had a hard time completing them in twenty minutes. So it was pretty impressive. So they show them to their advisory teachers, now they do a practice round first with their classmates, and they do them with their advisory teachers, and anybody they invite usually. Members of their family, siblings come along, sometimes they bring a friend. So it's not always the same group of people. This year, we had ninety-five percent in attendance that got to present to members outside of the school. And then one hundred percent of them completed a presentation and presented at school, but we got ninety-five percent that brought people from outside of school into school during our conference time. So now let them take it away.
Hi, I'm Vienna. So this is one of the slides I took from my PLP, and it's about my career exploration. So in life, I'm not really set on what career I wanna do yet, there's like many things that interest me, but the main ones are, I'd like to be a travel nurse, a psychologist, a flight attendant, a neuroscientist, or a pro soccer player.
Sorry.
One more clip. Oh, wait, it's not sharing. Oh, it's just a little delay, there we go.
So my goals, hopes, and dreams in life are, well, I mean, I have many, but these are my main. So my hopes are that I will be successful in all that I do. My goals are to be a good person and help others, and accomplish many different things. And my dream is to travel the world. So, in the middle school, we have this thing called responsibility for learning, which is another way that we kind of, like, score ourselves, I don't really know how to put it, but, like, on different things. So, it kind of like scores us on like how we are in the classroom, I guess. I've highlighted everywhere I think I am for what, like, the criteria I meet. So in work completion, I think that I am proficient, because I complete my work well, and I submit it, and it meets all the criteria, to a very good extent. For academic time, I think I'm also proficient, because I think that I tend to use my academic time really well and get all my work completed, but I'm not exemplary, because I tend to talk with my friends sometimes. So there's that. Checking in, I think I'm exemplary, because I check in a lot with my teachers to make sure that I have a really thorough understanding of the topic that we're working on and the things that we are doing in class. Using feedback, I think I'm also exemplary, because I feel like that goes with checking in. I use a lot of the feedback that I get from my teachers when I check in to put it into my work and help me excel, I guess. My academic voice, I think I'm proficient in that, because I think that my voice is regularly heard in class, and I engage in the conversation pretty well, but maybe I'm not exemplary, because I don't always tend to talk. I just, I talk regularly enough that I'm proficient, but not enough that I'd be exemplary. My collaboration, I think I'm exemplary in collaboration, because I work, I find that I work really well in groups, and I really like helping my classmates or my groupmates understand the material that we're working on, and really have a good understanding of what we're doing, so they can excel in class. And lastly, absences, I think I'm exemplary for absences, because I'm most of the time never absent. And when I am, if ever, I tend to check in with my teachers or let them know that I will be gone, and if I need to get any work in or get anything done for classes. And that is it for me.
Hi, I'm Bethany, and I'm going to be talking about my learning style. So when I'm learning, I like to solve a problem by myself and then check in with my teachers or classmates. It makes me feel like, it makes me feel more confident, because I'm not just like, hey, what'd you get for this? Like, can you just tell me the answer, 'cause I don't know? So, like, answer, and if I'm wrong, we'll talk it out. Like, I feel like we all just have a good bond with that. And I mostly prefer to work alone. And when I explain a question, I'd rather write about it than to speak or present for people about it. I feel like doing CERs, which is Claim Evidence and Reasoning, to make your claim, and then you back it up, and then you put it in your own words. So I feel like CERs in science have allowed me to get used to writing, and really, since we've done it for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it just kind of, I've enjoyed doing them. And in Mids East class and Humanities, we do a lot of writing, which I just feel like I'm good at writing. And I dislike presenting in front of my classmates. So I took a survey, and it says that I'm an ENFP, which I'm six percent extrovert, nine percent intuitive, and then I'm nineteen percent feeling and nine percent perceiving. So responsibility for learning. Overall, I feel like I'm really, I do really well in responsibility for learning. One of my strongest strengths is checking in my teachers, which I feel like a lot of people in our class, or even in the middle school, is just like really good with that, because our teachers, like, form a bond with the students. So I feel like we're like really comfortable talking to them if we need help, or just, hey, I'm gonna be absent today, like, what do you want me to work on, and then they'll get back to you. And another one of my strengths is talking in class. On my trimester two-report card, Mr. Hartman said that I do really well in talking, and if there's a question being asked, I'll answer it if I know it. And I feel like I do need to talk more in science, though, which is something I'm trying to work on, and which she does help a little bit, because she'll like pick out of, she'll pick out of like this jar and to answer a question, and then, so everyone has like an equal amount of talking, like, answering a question. And Humanities will pretty regular, like, check in, like, as a whole class, we'll get in a circle and be like, hey, where are you at with this project, and we'll just talk about it.
So my name's Hannah, and this is my responsibility for learning. So, some of my weaknesses, I think, for responsibility for learning are checking in and collaboration. Mostly because I've found that I work better by myself, and I have a hard time talking about my work that I've done. And so I think it's easier to just not talk about it, but I have been working on it. Some of my strengths for responsibility for learning are work completion and using feedback. So almost all the time, I have my work done when, like, by the due date, and I like using feedback, because it can like highlight what I can improve on and what I need to continue working on. And I have, it's easier for me to work on these skills, because in all of our classes, I think, like, we, the teachers have us talk about a certain problem that we're working on. Like, we talk about it with each other, and then we share our answers. And so it just helps us communicate to each other, like, and, yeah. So these are my executive, these are my executive function skills, and my strengths are response inhibition, time management, and metacognition. So response inhibition, I can think about the task that I'm gonna do before I do it. Time management, I can see how long, how much time I have to work on an assignment, and then I can see how much I can do in that time. And then metacognition is I'm aware of what I'm doing, like, throughout the day, and I'm not just doing stuff blindly. And then my weaknesses for executive management skills are goal-directed persistence, task initiation, and sustained attention. And so I just have a hard time starting a project, and I don't really know what to start with, and I get distracted really easily. And then my learning style, so I'm a visual learner, so I can, I have an easier time watching or reading something rather than having somebody explain it to me, or like doing a hands-on task. I just think that it's easier to remember and keep it in my mind when I have, like, a video or I'm reading something. And that, the quiz that I got that from, it like helps you decide whether you're, like, whether you're auditory learner, a visual learner, or a tactical learner. And then for multiple intelligences, it just, it explains to you what you can, easier things to... It explains how you can do things easier.
Kind of explains like who you are.
Yeah.
Your personality, I guess.
And then I can work on stuff better when I'm by myself, and I don't really like presenting. And I just think that it's easier to work alone rather than in a group setting. And that is my presentation.
I'm Liliana, and this is my learning style slide from my PLP. And so I took the same surveys as Hannah did, and from the survey that portrayed and defined the learning styles, like, the three main ones were auditory, visual, and tactile. And the tactile learning style was my preferred, according to the survey. And I can understand this from my personal preference in how I learn. I like to apply what I am taught to a project, or a writing piece, or maybe even a model. It's like science. And so I like, I love applying my knowledge to projects, and creating my own understanding of a topic, or maybe even a curriculum that we are doing. And then there's my executive functioning skills, and my main focus is my weaknesses of task initiation and time management. Now, these are weaknesses from mainly according to the little survey that we took with Ms. Caldwell, and we scored ourselves on each executive functioning skill, and its, I guess, components or parts of it. And so task initiation and time management were my weakest executive functioning skills. And they're not so much as of a weakness when doing my work as they are strengths, because what I've noticed is with like task initiation and in writing class, I like to dive really deep into research and expand my knowledge to great extents. And so I have the task initiation, but then I don't know what to do or how to move on with my work. And then this is when time management comes in, because I'm busy doing all this research and confusing myself with some information, that I lose track of time, and then eventually the deadline for my work is like the next day, and I only have one paragraph written for a five-paragraph essay. And so there's a delay in my work completion there. And then there's an academic showcase, and the academic showcase is displaying one of my, some work from class that I felt like I did really well on, or just feel proud of. And so I chose my academic showcase of my argumentative writing and ELA. And it's not so much the work as also the executive functioning skills that tie into it. Now, I went really deep, and I'm still doing this research and writing. And so I'm doing lots of research and kind of creating my own understanding of money and how it works in today's society. And I've created a very big and confusing understanding of the topic. And then having to put it into words and making it clear for the reader of my, whoever reads my argumentative, is difficult and confusing for me. And I just feel proud of how I got along with it. That's it.
I thought it was interesting how a couple of you shared that you don't really like presenting, that you'd rather do it alone, and you did such a fabulous job, all of you. Thank you so much for sharing all the details of your PLPs and conference, how that all went. I love the responsibility for learning, how you had to square yourself as well on that, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I told him you might be asking some questions, so...
Well, less a question, but just a comment. I mean, I'm impressed by the self-reflection that the process requires. I mean, it's really a great teaching, not only in your life as a student, but just in your life as a human moving through the world, to have that ability to kind of self-reflect and highlight the strengths, and look at areas for improvement with like real, like honest reflection. It's a tool that's gonna serve you really well. It's very impressive to kind of see all of you doing that at your age, at your grade level, and I think shows just so much maturity as learners. Yeah, thank you.
I'm very proud of you all, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Mr. Hartman, for performing that.
Thank you all so much. Thanks, Kate.
I'm actually gonna stand, but...
Great.
Thank you, and thank you parents, we're... See you tomorrow.
Great. So I'm circling back to the agenda preview and prioritization. I neglected to address that before the spotlight. And we are going to reprioritize the flow of the meeting, and Lynn is going to go next, and Morgan will go after Lynn. Sorry for that oversight.
So I actually want to take mine a little bit out of order, because we have a staff member here. Melissa Capazudo has requested an appeal to the board based on credits and payment for courses that you're taking.
Yes.
So I'm gonna give you the floor, and you can explain it to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those of you that don't know me, I'm Melissa Capazudo, I am librarian here. I'm also a community member, I've owned a house here for twenty-four years, I love Montgomery. And I'm a special educator, not at the moment, I'm not a special educator, I'm a librarian. So for me to make that transfer, I need to six credits, and it's an additional endorsement, the library endorsement. And so we worked it out, three years, two classes, and I thought it was going to be paid for, but that's if this library position at the school was five days a week, and it's only two days a week. So that's really point four, so it's like forty percent, is what it comes down to, that they're able to pay. So I'm in my, I'm just finished my second class, now I'm on to my third that I'll take in the summer. So what I'm asking is if, not for additional funds, but if there are funds that, and I know it's not in the master agreement that we share classes and funds, but if someone is not using those funds to take a class, if they could be possibly transferred, and maybe it wouldn't happen every semester, but I'm just asking for some help financially, to allow me to stay here and continue my classes. A three-credit class is $2,000 at UVM, and it has to be at UVM, so it's pretty expensive, me paying the other half of it, and me only being here two days a week paycheck, that's not that big either, to pay for that. But I'm not looking, I just wanna let you know, I'm not looking to move anywhere else, like, get my endorsement and go somewhere else. I love Montgomery, and I want to be here. That's why I entered back into education, simply to be part of my town. That's basically it, short and simple, I'm just asking for some help in any way.
Okay, I'm gonna fill in a few things there that we had talked about. So in the master agreement, the way it is written is, in the last negotiation, we added language so that anybody who's on a provisional license or emergency license is eligible to have the equivalent of six UVM credits paid for at the winter rate while they're on that provisional license. So that's double what we offer other teachers, it's historically been three credits. There's a word in there that Melissa's talking about, it says prorated, so that's based on what FTE you work. So the point that you made is that you still have to take the same number of courses even though your position is prorated. So I think that that was an important part of what we had talked about, and I wanna make sure that the board had that piece of the information, too.
Thank you for clarifying, yep.
Am I allowed to add anything? That's it, Mary. Am I okay?
Yeah.
Is it okay if I add?
Of course.
I just, I recall us having the same conversation several years ago, and I think it's because we have these point four positions, it's difficult. And it's, and when it becomes a lot to the librarian, they have to get a whole separate certification. So even though she's been a teacher for many, many years, she had to start over at six classes, and so, and it has to be done within those three years, it's not like it can be dragged out for six. So it feels like we're asking someone to fill this really important role in a part-time position. It's, these people are hard to come by. I'm just saying, and you know, we went through this several years ago with our other librarian, and I know that it was a similar type of situation, that she was trying to fund it and so forth, but... And there's been a lot of turnover here with the librarian, right? Yeah, and it's a unique situation, I feel, it's just totally different, because they have to have this separate certification. And with that emergency provisional, three years allowed to get that, and, you know, two classes a year at $2,000 apiece, it seems like a lot to ask for someone that's getting a point four paycheck, so it has been a sticky point for a long time.
Great, well, we appreciate it, we appreciate you, and we will absolutely take it up in executive session later in the meeting, and then after a decision has been made, Lynn will reach out to you.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Can I just have one question, is UVM the only school in the state that offers the...
Yes.
Okay, so that's why it's only, gotcha.
And it's really on track, they don't, one class, you have to take that one, that's, so people cycle in wherever they are. It's very specific, and it is just UVM.
I think we even brainstormed some other ideas a while back about borrowing tuition reimbursement even from others, if we were allowed to donate a class, like, if I wasn't gonna take one, or another teacher wasn't gonna take one, we talked about that, did that happen years ago? There was never anything like a pool of tuition reimbursement? There used to be a pool, but that hasn't been in... No, it was a long time ago. And then we had talked about at another time, an idea of maybe letting her borrow her tuition reimbursement for years to come if she promised to stay here for several years and not take other classes after, like... I don't know, there was conversation that we had before the last time this came up. I just remember people throwing out different ideas.
I feel like that was probably when, before merger, because it's kind of, it's resonating for me, but I think it was prior to merger, I remember that conversation. but I think it was prior to merger. I remember that conversation distinctly, yes. Yeah.
Very similar circumstance.
Yes.
Well, thank you all so much.
Great, thank you so much.
Do you want to leave that for the floor?
This one or just like my nose to look at, if I only, if I needed to look down, but I mean, it's basically.
Say the other details.
Yes, she does, both of them. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient.
Okay, so we're just gonna turn the slideshow on. I'll start with personnel. So I will go over the action items because those, those seem like they constantly evolve. So I'm not sure what version you have in, in writing, but some changes have come even in the last hour, I think. I don't know if they're updated in here or not, but. So in terms of hiring, I have some action items there. So Morgan Romprey, elementary classroom teacher at Berkshire. And Sheldon Jessica Price, middle school math interventionist. Polly Gregory, who will be switching from grade five to school librarian. And Robert Hickey under NMV as the tech integrationist that you all put in your budget for this year.
I'm happy to make that motion for those hires. We'll do that by roll. Lisa.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Miranda.
Aye.
Arlene.
Aye.
Kat.
Aye.
And Mary is an aye.
Okay. Under resignations, I just added one. Sandy, I'm not sure if I spelled that correctly, the last name. You can help me. Berkshire Elementary, it's not showing up on yours, though. I think you need to refresh.
J A N A R O.
So in Berkshire, Misty McCartney, elementary classroom teacher. Jennifer Seawright, literacy interventionist, and Megan Reed, grade two teacher. Chloe Gennaro, kindergarten teacher at Montgomery. Joanna Giroux, school social worker, SAP counselor at Sheldon. The others are informational because they're SU positions or they're support staff. So ask for motion on the resignations as well. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kat. By roll, Lisa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
Miranda.
Aye.
Arlene.
Aye.
Kat.
Aye.
And Mary is an aye.
So I will, will go over the open positions because we're in hiring season. And I just wanna make sure that's out there for public consumption. In Bakersfield, we are looking for a grade two teacher, a math and literacy interventionist, a paraeducator, and an evening custodian. In Berkshire, we're looking for elementary classroom teachers. I don't know, Lenny, if you can turn on, I don't know how many, if that's two. I think it might be two.
Sorry, my internet's a little spotty, so I'm, I'm here, but I'm not able to have my video up. Can you repeat that question?
Sure. The number of elementary teachers you're hiring for right now?
It is two as of the information I got from Megan Reed earlier today.
Perfect.
And then, and then the interventionist position as well.
Okay, thank you. So literacy interventionist and paraeducators. Montgomery is looking for an LPN or RN paraeducator position, and now an elementary classroom teacher. Sheldon is looking for a paraeducators, a PE teacher, a grade five teacher, and a school counselor. And NMV is still looking for a health teacher. So that piece is just informational. There were some extensions. We have, we've heard from those extensions, but I know those were due today. So both Megan and Chloe did, did decide to resign. They've, they have moved on to other positions. We had two staff requests. You have already heard Melissa's staff request. Steven Adams from Berkshire, he is the school counselor at Berkshire, made a request of the board similar, I believe the board received a similar request at the last meeting. He is nearly out of sick time. I think he has a half day left. And he is requesting that he be allowed to use up to three additional days unpaid if needed. So they have to request unpaid days of the board, so that's why it's coming to you. And they're supposed to do that in advance, so. Don't know if this board, did you approve any of those at the last meeting?
It was in the Spur.
It was the other board?
Yeah.
So these requests came in the other board, and what they chose to do was to be consistent with all of the requests and approve up to two days of unpaid leave if needed. And just made the request of the employee that they would need to come back to the board if they needed more than the two days.
That was the ER board?
Yes.
And why did they land on two?
They were trying to be consistent and they just, they picked a number.
But consistent based on like, on what, on people, on what kinds of requests were coming in?
They had about five requests because there were about five people in the district who were out of leave. And the requests ranged from two to 10 days.
Okay.
In terms of the request, and they, and they knew that they didn't want to just open up 10 days to someone. So they chose to, you do not have to choose to. You're a totally different board, but I wanted to give you that as background information.
I mean, I understand it, and he's also, he's asking for three, so I, I, I'm inclined to believe that he feels like he needs three for a particular reason. I can't presume to know, you know, what's running in the background necessitating the ask.
I don't think he, he knows a reason. I think it is a just-in-case. Because this is someone who has small children.
Yep.
And we know what it's been like to have small children and sicknesses. So I think, I think I could speak that the staff member is looking out through the lens of, I have this many weeks left of school. I would like to, you know, make sure if I need them, I could have up to three additional.
Yeah.
It's not three additional, it's three unpaid.
Three unpaid. And are, are you, do you feel concerned or was the Ennisburg board in landing on two and trying to kind of have consistency? Were they concerned about the, the kind of the impact of, I mean, obviously 10 days is a lot. And with subs being in short supply and stuff, I assume there's kind of that like mitigation strategy for the need for subs? If you're all of a sudden having someone take upwards of 10 days off unpaid?
I think the first person asked for two days.
Yeah.
And then it kind of just went from there.
They definitely had that in their mind, though, too, because there are, all principals have been struggling. I think I can speak for the two year, to find coverage because there have not been substitute teachers this year. So I think they did kind of want to cap it and say like, if you did have an event and you need more than two, just come back. They weren't saying that they wouldn't offer them more than two unpaid if there was, you know, a real circumstance, but they didn't want to just say, here's 10, how about it?
Sure, I understand that. What would happen, though, just hypothetically, if we set, say, okay, two for now, and then of course, if there is a need, come back? But can he, could this staff person bring the need to you or they're building principal? Because we're not meeting again for a while, and, and so how would that work? I mean, we wouldn't want to be calling like a special meeting to vet that.
You could make that contingent, that if something happened, that I could give them, you know, conditional approval, and then we would formalize it the next.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I think that would be fine. I just wouldn't want to back this person into a corner that he, he only has two and that's it, and then unless the board comes back together and he ends up needing three, or possibly more.
Lynn, do we also see this more because the number of young teachers we have, so they haven't been, accumulate too many. He's got young children. And pandemic, it seems like there was a lot of sickness coming through schools.
It's not that. This is someone who's been here for a while, but it's young children. And it's when, you know, people get sick and certain things that keep you out for a number of days. And that adds up, especially if it goes through a family, you know? I feel like when we're talking unpaid and I get the sub issue, but like to ask for three and come back to two just seems, I don't know what the word is, kind of like, I don't know, petty? But like I also get wanting to be consistent across like the whole district. And with the ER already kind of setting this precedent of two days, that makes me inclined to want to go with that. But it kind of just feels like, yeah, if your kid has a stomach bug, three days is like nothing, so like, and we're not paying you for it, so.
I, I don't have a problem with the three. I mean, and I don't feel obligated to land on two because the ER board did that. I mean, if this was something that we were determining at the SU level, that would be a different, that would be a different conversation. But because it wasn't addressed at the SU level, they, you know, maybe for Ennisburg, that's what made sense, but I, I mean.
Like he's already asked, and then to have to ask again if you did need that third day again, it just kind of seems like a lot of wasted time.
Yeah. I mean, I would say that in the same vein, though, if we did have someone asking 10, that might be, that, that I think would be a bridge too far. And we might need to kind of rein it in a little and then dole it out more judiciously. You know, be a Lynn or something like that, but the difference between two and three days that he may or may not need doesn't seem all that significant to me.
Okay.
So any, any other thoughts from other folks on that? All right, so I'll make a motion to, I forgot glasses, for Steven Adams to have three additional days unpaid. We'll do that by roll. Lisa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
Miranda.
Aye.
Arlene.
Aye.
Kat, aye. Mary is an aye.
Thank you. I do not have anything under student this evening. I do want to talk a little bit about our new statewide assessment. So I, I don't know if I have talked about it at the local board level. I've definitely talked about it at the SU board level. So the state of Vermont for years has given the Sback assessment as our standardized assessment measure. Late this fall, we learned that there had been a shift, and we shift to a Cognia assessment. That's not the acronym they're using. What is it?
MOCAP.
B cap, B T cap. So this is our very first year, so I want to talk a little bit about the rollout. Pretty late. We found out in late fall, and there was a delay in training of our trainers. And then there was a delay in receiving training materials. And it was pretty bumpy up until right when the assessment window opened. There were still some changes that were occurring in the manuals and the administration. So I think that, you know, I know that the state cannot say that they're using this as a pilot year because they have expectations in the, in the ESA plan, the federal expectations. But I, I will say from my perspective, the, the bumps have made this pretty challenging. And I know some of the bumps have resulted in certain accommodations not being available for students that were supposed to be available for students, and some, some being open for all, and they were not supposed to be open for anyone unless they had a special accommodation. So there are just some things that we're gonna need to remember when we look across the state at these assessments. One of the things that I want to say is that our staff and our students have demonstrated incredible perseverance through this because it has been stressful, in an already stressful year, to have to administer what's considered a high-stakes assessment that is unfamiliar. You've not had an opportunity to really practice with the test administration, practice tests and, and things like that. So even kids who were trying to log in, I have samples from some of the, the early folks who tested right off the bat. They really, they went first and helped us to figure out all of the bumps for the rest of the people. So people who scheduled later are benefiting from that. But there were some classes who the students logged in and, you know, a handful of kids were able to get on and start their assessment. But then there might have been eight or 10 kids who, who couldn't get on. And it was an hour or an hour and a half before they were able to get on, and they were patient and they persevered through it. And I just, I appreciate that very much, but I just wanted to kind of talk about that. And I do hope that we will see some results a little more quickly with this assessment than what we had been seeing with the Sback. So any questions?
They're reading up again?
Yes. Was there a reason for the change? That anyone understands or? Yes, I think that, what was the reason they gave? I think that equity, more culturally competent type assessment, or culturally representative assessment. I know it went out to bid. I know the state had an RFP, a request for proposal process. And what we were told is that there was a delay with the RFP. There wasn't a lot of detail shared, so I don't, I don't know specifically. But I do think it was primarily that, and I don't know financially, there was an implication to. And do you know, like from the student's perspective, like when they log in, is the, was the formatting like similar? Like, is it multiple choice or like, would it have been like?
You're not allowed to talk to them about it.
Oh, it's very. I just wondered if, you know, a kid in eighth grade that's done it since third, are they like walking into something that's like, whoa, you know, what the heck is this?
It's similar.
I haven't heard them say, wow, that was so, but we're not really supposed to look at their computers. We're not supposed to talk to them about the questions. The security information was different.
I can speak to it from the practice test if you want.
Yeah.
Practice test questions are very similar to Sback questions for, for the middle school students, in math at least. So they, thank you for all of the one before our students. We were able to get eighth grade math done. We have a couple students that need to make up exams, but most of them need to do it over the last two days.
The state has, and I don't know if you, I did send an email out, but Secretary French has resigned. We now have interim Secretary of Education Heather Boucher, who is sitting in that position. She sent a message out after hearing from our superintendent's organization about some of the complexity of the challenges. She did send a message out across the state just acknowledging some of the challenges and extended the window an extra two weeks, which I think calmed a lot of people. Because it all, we also went from a very long window for Sback to a much shorter, condensed window. And with absences sometimes happening for many days, that was creating a lot of stress for people about how that all was gonna play out, so. But they're not allowed to make up a test, right? If they miss the day?
Yes.
No, they are.
Oh. On my sheet at the bottom, it said, no makeups allowed.
Well.
Like with the date?
No, there's no, there was no makeup window.
Makeup window.
Like the test, they were telling us that it ended on May 26.
Gotcha. So if the kid's absent.
Sback had a makeup window.
Yeah.
But we made sure we, we scheduled ours so that they happened early in the week, so we had a few days at the end of the week before the cut off.
One day, they will have to, okay. Okay, any other questions on that?
Did the, did this test include science or is science still separate?
For fifth and eighth, for us, just fifth and eighth. And what high school, science?
Nine.
Eleven? Nine and eleven.
I thought it was nine.
Fifth and eighth for us.
And has PE been dropped as a requirement?
So I know next up I have legislative update for you, and I don't really have a fresh update. And there might be someone virtually that knows more than I do. But currently, I think there are, the bills that I've already spoken with you about are, are kind of in committee. And I don't know, like, I don't know that there's been action. We've come out of, nothing's really gone through that I'm aware of, so I don't know. Lisa, do you have anything you want to add?
I think you're correct, Lynn. I don't think anything education-related has moved since you last updated us.
Okay. All right, thank you. So in terms of PCB testing, I reported to you at our last meeting that there was a bill that was being considered in the legislature to pause the PCB testing so that they could align the PCB testing with the facility assessment and the planning for future, what's the word I'm looking for?
Mediation?
No, the state construction aid, the potential for state construction aid. state construction aid, the potential for state construction aid, which has been, um, on pause for two decades. So, rather than doing all of the testing for PCBs and then the remediation, and then testing facilities and determining that there are other bigger facility issues, and then redoing construction in a building that you've already just done construction in or a project, they really were trying to put all those together, so to pause and do it all comprehensively. So, that has not moved through. It's still being considered. In the meantime, I had reported to you last fall that we had, um, and last spring, that we had certain windows of time that our schools were scheduled to be tested. Bakersfield and Montgomery were the only two schools exempt because they were built post nineteen eighty. So, um, they did test Richford Elementary in the fall. For whatever reason, we did not receive the results for Richford Elementary. In the last three weeks, we've seen things speed up for us. We, I wasn't anticipating that, but that bill hasn't moved anywhere, so we just have to go along with the process. So, Richford Elementary and Berkshire Elementary were both recently tested. I mean, I think just Monday, Ennisburg Elementary was tested, so that, that was a little surprising to me. I wasn't expecting that testing. Sheldon has gone through the assessment piece, but not the testing. So, I guess I have no idea at this point what their timeline is because it's way off what their projection was. Um, and we haven't gotten a new timeline that can tip me to what can be expected, I guess.
So, I think a more cynical person might draw a connection between this talk of a delay and the contractor that's been assigned to our schools trying to get some work in before that delay maybe hits the ground. Um, because we are, you know, for all our schools, we're far behind on the schedule, and it seems to be picking up.
So, we're waiting testing results right now from three schools, and for you, um, it, it's Berkshire, and we know Sheldon's in McKeel. We just don't know when they're going to show up and want to test. Okay? Any questions on PCBs? So, next up is, uh, the annual, um, N M V School Choice in District Transfer Report. So, when you merge, you wrote a policy that allows students from within the N M V district to transfer between your four schools. Um, annually, they have that option, so those applications for transfer are due on May first of each year. So, we have a few students moving this next year. So, we have two students moving from Bakersfield to Berkshire. We have one student moving from Montgomery to Berkshire, and one Berkshire student moving to Montgomery. So, you can see that some people are starting to exercise this choice. It's not an overwhelming number of people that are doing it. This does not come with transportation. These are families that know if they choose this, that this, they have to figure out their own transportation. I think it's similar to the numbers we've seen in the past. This might be your third year, maybe four, is it third?
It's at least third.
Yeah, I did not look back, but.
If they're, if they had already transferred, like, do they reapply every year? So, this is like new numbers in addition to kids who might already be, okay.
Once you are accepted into the transfer, it, it ensures that you can stay through your eighth grade graduation as long as your family remains a resident of the N M V district.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Okay. At the last meeting, we talked about, um, the rotation of our board meetings for the next school year. Um, Courtney did a little spreadsheet, and we were talking that we probably should make a motion to approve the plan. Um, you did this verbally, um, but I think that you really should do a motion, so it has you ro- rotating alphabetically as we have for the past several years, um. Oh, okay, yeah, I do see that one.
Um, so, usually, we do not have a school spotlight in August, just because we're not in school. And I didn't feel right giving Gavin a school spotlight in September, um, since he's new. So, we wanted him and Terry Sue to be able to see Rhoda and Sandy first. So, what I did, um, I just switched Rhoda and Gavin for this next coming year, so we would start in Berkshire and then go to Bakersfield. Um, and then Montgomery and Sheldon, and then in December, we would be in Berkshire again. Um, and then that would be his first spotlight, and then January and February and March. But that was when you all decided to be at our new central office location. And in March, because we're not out of school, I felt like, um, giving Gavin that spotlight in March was doable. And then we go back to Bakersfield in April, Montgomery, and then end the year in Sheldon. So, that's my proposal.
Okay, yeah, it looks good. You want a motion to accept?
Yes.
I'll make that motion. We'll do that by roll. Lisa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Miranda?
Aye.
Arlene?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
And Mary is an aye.
Uh, the only thing that I have that I think I missed was I do have a personnel issue that I'll need to go into executive session for. We could do that at the end.
We'll do those, we have two executive sessions then to do, so we'll do those under board business at the end, and we can let folks go.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Lynn?
Yes.
All right, so Morgan, you're up with the financial update.
Thank you. Um, FY twenty-three, the update is just informational. Uh, we're still waiting on a tuition bill from Maple Run and maybe one other school. Um, so hopefully, you'll, we'll get those in soon, and you'll see them, um, by email in the next couple of weeks. Uh, FY twenty-four, information in your packet also, um, just informational. Um, I put in that figure of the budgeted teachers who are coming back, mostly to, to tip you that we're probably going to be a lot closer on salaries going into next year because we had a settled contract, and we are having definitely more teachers returning rather than being replaced by either cheaper, more expensive folks. Um, so that, um, fills me with a little confidence going into FY twenty-four.
Which is also something to really celebrate because our, our hiring situation this year is much better than what it has been in years past.
Yeah.
And for FY twenty-five, I'm going to, um, I'm going to do a little, relatively quick, no, I'll do it because I'm going to bounce around. Um, relatively quick slide presentation. I'm pretty surprised when I go to my association meetings how many of my colleagues are reporting that the, their systems, um, hold on a second, uh, whether it be their board members or their superintendents or principals or staff are really not tuned into the changes that are, um, coming at us with the next budget in terms of the change in people waiting. Um, so I'm going to keep hammering this until December when it's real in, in terms of your budget process. Um, and I just want to do a quick walkthrough, and, and most of this is stolen from a presentation that, um, the A O E gave to us recently. Um, again, this is coming from Act one seventy-three. Uh, we've talked in the past about equalized pupils, and that is being replaced with long-term weighted average daily membership. Um, it's the same concept. They're trying to, you know, basically take every student and make them, um, an average cost-to-educate elementary kid, um, no matter where they are in the state or, or what, um, that school's population looks like. Um, the, the weighting factors, however, have changed pretty significantly, um, and that was, the part of Act one seventy-three that changed that came out of a study where the state hired a consulting firm to look at how we were weighting kids, um, which was something that was, I think, well, basically unchanged since Act forty-six, which was.
Weights, it's been about twenty years.
Twenty years ago. So, the intent of the new weights and categories, um, this is something that, uh, Lynn and I have talked about and that the A O E is pushing. Basically, with the change is that if you are a district that is advantaged by the new weights, you will either have a lower spending per pupil and a lower household homestead tax rate, or you can spend more per pupil and have the same tax rate. The three bullet points kind of talk about how that moves. But the, the intent of the law was not to have districts that, um, are kind of winners in terms of the additional tax capacity. Just roll that out and, and drive their tax rate down and push that back, um, to the voters. Um, the intent is really to recognize that they have more kids that in theory are more costly to educate, and this law is giving them the ability to, to, um, programmatically take care of those kids.
Foundationally, in Act one seventy-three, um, it, it was written so that it, you should have less of an impact on the education that your students have access to based upon your zip code. It should be an opportunity for us to provide more equitable opportunities for education for all students across Vermont.
Um, so these are how the weights are changing, and that pre-one twenty-seven line, um, are the weights that, um, that we built your current year in your FY twenty-four budgets on. So, for pre-K, you don't get to count a whole kid. You're only counting point four six, so there's a, an actual negative weight for every pre-K kid that we have in our A D M. Um, six through twelve, under the current system, you get an extra point one three for each kid in those categories. What Act one twenty-seven has done is split out, and so for six through eight, that weight is about three times as, um, as impactful, and for nine through twelve, it's, you know, slightly more impactful. Um, poverty, an even bigger swing, um, for your, you know, free and reduced lunch count. Uh, before Act one twenty-seven, you would basically get an extra kid for every four that you had , um, living in poverty. Now, you're getting an extra kid for every one that you have living in poverty. So, districts with relatively higher poverty are seeing, um, some of the biggest swings in the state. And then the last, uh, category is formerly English language learners, and this stands for merging multilingualers, multilingual learners, like myself. Before Act one twenty-seven, um, for every five E and L kids, you got an extra one. Now, for every one kid, you're getting an extra two and a half. So, for districts like Winuski that historically have had a huge number of, um, kids in this category, they're seeing one of the biggest increases in terms of capacity for their budgets. The second, um, second section are weights that are completely new, so, um, based on a district's population density, sparser districts are getting weight for their entire student population that we hadn't gotten in the past. So, you can see those weights aren't huge, um, but they are going to impact both of our districts. Um, and then if a district gets sparsity weight, they also qualify for additional, um, small schools weight. Uh, so, if you have a school that has less than a hundred kids, um, the kids in that school, you get an extra two point one for every kid. If you have schools that are less than two hundred and fifty kids, um, you get a, a small fraction, but you're still getting a, an additional, amount to count for those kids. So, in the past, Montgomery and Bakersfield have come to N M V with what was, used to be called the Small Schools Grant, and it's now called the Mergers Support Grant. With this new, um, new weighting, um, Berkshire's now considered a small school, and so you're going to be getting some additional weights for them. One of the, the differences, though, is that when this calculation goes through, you will either get a Mergers Support Grant or you will get the additional weights. So, if you, if you get the additional weights, that Mergers Support Grant goes on hold. Um, in theory, it's still there, and so, um, if ten years down the road, Montgomery, Bakersfield, and Berkshire all have student populations of three hundred, that Mergers Support Grant's going to come back because you're going to lose those weights, but you don't get to count both of those. Um, the trick is that somebody needs to be around to remember that we've got a Mergers Support Grant, and I have a little faith in that, unless it's us. So, the first column here is the, um, the budget that was just approved in March. This is a final, final equalized pupil number, so it's slightly different from what we had warned. But basically, on that budget that you proposed with the anticipated revenue, working through the yield, the equalized pupils, we went to voters and we anticipated a tax rate before C L A of, um, just about a dollar sixteen. The second column is, um, basically that same budget number, but if the Act one twenty-seven weights had been in effect. Um, and so you'll see if, if those weights had been effective and we were still using what we call equalized pupils, you would have had about a hundred and fifty more kids, um, to count. So, for that, um, for that same budget, you were, and spending per pupil would drop pretty significantly. The yield stays the same, and your tax rate going to voters would be actually just over a dollar. So, big, significant swing for N M V. Um, that third column is the increased capacity, so, um, the second line is saying, okay, we know we're getting those additional weights, so we're going to lose a little bit of that revenue. That will drive the tax rate up. But you still could add two and a half million dollars to the budget that you passed. And as you work through the calculations on that last column, that additional spending, losing the Small Schools Grant, but getting those, um, additional equalized pupils would put you at the same tax rate as you just warned. Um, there are certainly as many districts on the losing side of this in the state, and so the conversations at the board level, um, for districts that are having these conversations yet are, are pretty different depending on where you are. Um, and then the last thing that I wanted to talk about is that the, um, the yield figure, which is one of the first numbers we get uh, when we're looking at tax rates, is going to change pretty dramatically. So, the, the steps that I just walked you through really would be relevant if we were the only ones making any changes. But half the districts in the state are going to see this increased capacity, and so presumably they're all going to have some mix of increasing their budgets or cutting their tax rates. To the extent that they're increasing their budgets, the yield has to go down, um, to raise enough property tax money to support those budgets. There are also districts who in theory should be cutting their taxes, uh, cutting their budgets to, um, to kind of realign with, um, these more accurate, uh, pupil numbers. They actually get a soft landing in Act one seventy-three so that their, their tax rate, I believe, can't go up more than five percent a year. So, there's going to be a tipping point where their business managers are going to say, don't bother cutting more out of this year's budget because it's not going to impact your tax rate. This is the amount we do. We'll come back next year and get it. And so those districts aren't going to come down as fast as they quote-unquote should, and that's also going to give some pressure on the yield. And so I think that's it. I, what I want to leave you with is that, um, these changes are going to be significant for N M V, and obviously, there's lots of things that move from year to year. Um, but we, we will be approaching this budget season with, the mindset of, okay, you've got an opportunity here. What are some of the, the offerings that you've wanted to have that you haven't? What are some of the, um, discrepancies still between the, the four elementary schools that you want to address? And, you know, the September, October, November conversations will be that way, and then once we hit December, we'll start to get a yield rate, and we'll see how much of that, um, we can really stomach in terms of what we want to put in voters. Uh, so I know dense stuff, and nobody ever has questions for me because it's so dense. If there are any questions, I need to try and answer them.
Do I have questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, going back to the intent of the act, could you, is that in writing? Could you, is that in writing with like where the, what you're saying that I'm just thinking about going to the community later with like, oh, there's this extra money that's the budget's increased this much, but we're also, whatever the decisions are made, right? With the tax rate versus the extra spending, how to really highlight the intent of the act there? So if you could restate that.
There are some tips to that in the preamble of the bill. Whereas and where at's three pages long that nobody much reads in those. So we could certainly pull from that.
There's also the UVM study by Tammy Cooley that studied like, you know, what the weights have meant historically and what the changes, opportunities we could get through changes with the weights. And that's very clear in that UVM study that the intent is around more equitable access to opportunities for students who, I mean, we've historically been an incredibly low spending system. And so the opportunities we've been able to afford have not been the same as students who have been fortunate enough to live in other communities.
Any questions over there? I do not need a motion for the classroom space in Sheldon. And just a quick update. We have, we've got the building is being built. We have RFPs out for site work and for the slab and for electric to the building. I don't think I have anything back from Vern yet on the last of the concrete. Those were due today. That's going to be a significant expense. We will also have to do some separate wiring for a fire panel for the outbuilding. So we're working through those costs now. I think the electricity is going to be under 10,000. I think the fire panel is going to be under 10,000. The site work around there and the concrete is the one bid that I saw is over 40,000. And that's the trigger point where if we don't get three bids and it's over 40,000, we have to go to the AOE and say, can I please use this personally? Really tried to get three bids, but nobody's bidding on projects up here for the summer. And then two motions that I need from the board is around our copier lease. Three years ago, we basically joined this consortium that bids out copier contracts for a number of schools in Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. And they do that as a unit. We have a five-year agreement with them. But at year three, we were recycling and replacing some old machines. So we need to get a new motion for the new dollar amounts on there for the last two years of that agreement. And so I, they're in your packet. I can read them if you want. You should have them read for the minutes. The first one would be a motion to approve the proposed tax exempt lease with MST Government Leasing LLC for the purposes of leasing, refinancing, and funding photocopy equipment leases, including consultant fees and related costs of issuances of such leases in an amount not to exceed $65,438.74 and an interest rate of 5.24% per year through August 1, 2027.
I'll make that motion.
Can I just ask a question? Sorry, Morgan, if I missed this. So is this that you're presenting from a bid?
Yes, so we went out to bid.
You're saying in three or four years.
Right. So we went out to bid four years ago for the last three years of our agreement with them. But the bid was for a five-year agreement. So we will, they go out to bid every year. But we will, we will jump back in when the five-year agreement is over.
Any other questions? All right, so that's the motion on the table. We'll do that by roll. John?
Aye.
Lisa? Aaron?
Aye.
Miranda?
Aye.
Arlene?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
Mary is an aye.
And I will say that the, that amount actually also covers the machines at the supervisory union that were out to bid four years ago. The company had an opinion that supervisory unions couldn't directly enter a municipal lease. That has changed. And so when we do it in the next round, we'll actually be bringing a separate motion to all three boards. In this case, when we come to the SU board, if we need to, it will more just be allowing us to pay our share of this. And the second motion is a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute and deliver the tax exempt lease with MST consulting on such terms and conditions discussed and provided to the board and to execute and deliver any such documents required to execute the contract with Specialized Purchasing Consultants, Inc. Giving Lynn authority to sign stuff.
I'll make that motion by roll. Aaron?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Miranda?
Aye.
Arlene?
Aye.
Kat? Aye. Mary is an aye.
Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much, Morgan. Appreciate it. So moving on to our principal reports. Rhoda, do you have anything that you would like to highlight or add to yours?
I was going to just say something about the cognate as well that Lynn talked about. I am very proud of those students because definitely our first day was a tough day with that test. And it's a fourth grade and they'd only done that once before. So it's fairly new to them. And they, about half of them got on and half of them were not. And so we kind of moved things around and shifted those students down the hall and kept working with those who weren't on. And they were great. And they, they all got on and they all finished that section of it that morning. And I'm just very proud of them for doing that work. So it's great to see. And then that was one of the things I was going to say. Oh, we're very close on those two teaching positions. Very, very close. So hopefully you have the next morning. Once we have those final ones, we will be full other than par educators. So we will need a couple.
Agreed.
And a custodian. Don't forget that, that's important. If you know any custodians around, send them my way.
Thanks so much, Rhoda.
Yeah.
Lenny, anything that you would like to highlight from your board report?
Yeah, I think I wanted to highlight a couple of things. So I had, I don't know if Lynn had mentioned that her and I had collaborated on some things we could do to kind of help the school kind of succeed and thrive practically with what's going on at the school now and helping to close the year more effectively or as effectively as possible. And one of the things that Lynn had set me up with was Tim Stanley to come to the school and collaborate with our middle school teachers around how to foster greater student engagement. And also combined with that, decreasing some challenging behaviors. And we're working towards creating something we've tried in the past to not great success. And something that I was told by Lynn, and it sounds like it's been working pretty well at Sheldon around a like there might be a different term for it, but like a Friday fun day model where there's some, there's a highly rewarding incentive that students can earn by meeting certain behavioral and academic expectations over the course of a week. And the goal being to kind of greatly increase student motivation to want to be achieving their best both behaviorally and academically. And we started collaborating on that about a week or two before April break. We had a couple fine tuning elements that we wanted to cover with Tim this week. And we're planning on launching that starting next week. So I'm really excited to see that. I'm really appreciative to have Tim available to help us kind of dot our i's and cross our t's and use his expertise in rolling that out at a previous school. So we can kind of learn from their mistakes and also try and minimize some of the challenges as we make this happen. And the other thing I wanted to point to was our continued efforts around our engagement planning, work that our school has done to kind of come back with all those wonderful things we used to do that were whole school or whole community that brought that sense of joy and connectedness among our students, among our staffs, and among our community. And so we have three big things coming up in the next couple of days. Yesterday was another whole school morning meeting, or sorry, not yesterday. Today was a whole school morning meeting that I unfortunately missed as my child was sick. But I saw a few teachers while I was at school for a little while because I came a little late and missed that part. And all of them had the same thing to say, like, it was so awesome to see the middle schoolers having fun, the younger students having fun, the students seeing each other have fun, the teachers getting involved on some need to win activities that they did. And just how beautiful and special it is to kind of have those moments together as a whole school. We're going to do, we're doing a bigger and better version of our Green Up Day activity, which used to be sent around fifth and eighth graders. We'd go out on some buses and do some, do the green up trash collection. But we've launched it to a whole school event that's happening on Friday, Friday morning. And then Thursday evening of this week, we're going to have our first Fine Arts Night since COVID. So we got a bunch of things in the works and teachers have been working really hard to take the lead on that planning. And it's really, it's continuing to pay off positively in the school.
I'll just add in there, Tim Stanley, who he was referring to is a new board certified behavior analyst that we've hired at the SU level. We were able to fill one of our open positions. He's been here maybe three months. So he spent some time in Sheldon, he spent a little time in Bakersfield, and now he's spending some time in Berkshire. He's adding a lot of value to what we're able to do to support both students and staff.
Anything else, Lenny?
Uh, no, just that a few minutes ago, I had to leave my computer and go upstairs to help. My daughter was crying and then she threw up all over my wife. So I was away at the computer for a few minutes cleaning up some puke covered baby material.
Oh, the joys of parenthood, eh? Thank you, Lenny. If you would like to duck out, by all means, please feel free.
Thank you, Lenny.
Call it. Thank you so much. Hang in there. Sandy, I know you did your spotlight, but you have some, anything else you want to highlight?
I just want to say how exciting it is that we're going to Washington DC.
Oh, nice.
It's coming up finally after COVID. And the parent group raised all, we only asked for a hundred dollars per family as a deposit, a commitment deposit. And the rest of the money was raised by the group.
Bravo.
So it was about 850-ish per student. So it was an amazing year to watch that group. I hope, I hope it continues next year.
Nice.
I'm on that Montgomery forum page and they were very busy people. They're on there posting all the time.
Yeah, it's been, it's been fun because a lot of the fundraising they've done have been activities for the community to participate in, so.
I thought it was cool, too, that the cornhole group that was already established they then did like their tournament to contribute all the money they raised from that.
And Bob and Becca Cummings are both retired principals slash teachers that live in Montgomery. And so they've been very invested in their big cornhole tournament is a Saturday.
So fun.
And I ain't done yet. The kids will be running a concession there as well.
Nice, great. Love it. Great, thank you, Sandy. And we have no one from Sheldon tonight.
I could say a couple of things.
Do you want to highlight?
Sure.
So I spent a little time in Sheldon last Wednesday with Vern and with Michelle Tiverge. We walked around and staked out where the new modular will go. It was exciting to see the space staked out. It's bigger than I was, it's hard for me to imagine what, you know, the size will look like in reality. But it was staked out in such a way that I could see the size of each of the four classrooms. So that was really exciting. We also took a pretty deep look at all of the spaces within Sheldon. And I'm really close. We got the place from getting some feedback on this, where everybody is going to go. Everybody has, we asked for staff to give their ideas about where they think people should go. And of course, it's not aligned because everybody has a different idea about who should go where. So I think a lot of people will be happy. Maybe some not so much. But I think that we're putting together a really logical, student-centered system-focused plan for Sheldon. So I think it's going to be vastly improved from where we have been.
That's great, that's exciting.
It is exciting.
Yeah, nice. Anything else, Lynn?
I think that's, that's good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So moving on, the board business. Lynn, you had highlighted a few two things here, the video from the BSBA on the essential work of Vermont School Boards and the effective and ethical operations. I'm assuming that's just for each board person to peruse at their leisure as opposed to presenting tonight.
I want to talk just briefly about each of those pieces. And I apologize, I should have that queued up. I forgot we have that on the agenda. So at your BSBA website, there are all of the tools, the toolkits. So there's the essential, the board toolkit, essential work toolkit. And one of the things that I'm trying to do is to bring up each of those pieces throughout the year, starting in your board reorganizational meeting. And there are a few elements that are most relevant for the district boards and some that are more relevant for the SU board. So I'm spreading those out. So I do hope that you will click on the links and go in there. The essential work, the first link just brings you to the essential work of Vermont School Board's site. And then if you click into effective and ethical operations on that site, it will bring you to a sheet that talks about as a body. I'm just going to read this paragraph, Mary. Effective and ethical operations. School boards are public bodies entrusted by the community with overseeing the system of education for children, children in the district. As elected officials, school board members must act with integrity and adhere to the highest ethical standards. Lawful and effective operations are crucial to a strong school board. Effective operations are characterized by well-organized meetings with agendas that focus discussion and decision-making. Engage board members who have the information necessary to make informed decisions and practices, protocols, and policies that are legally compliant. So there are tools in there. If you want to take a look, there are roles and responsibilities that you can take a look at. In terms of ethical operations, there's policy, there's a self-assessment, and some additional resources. So I'm going to keep bringing you back here so you can see what's available to you as board members.
Thank you. Any agenda items people might like to discuss and add now? Our next meeting will be June 7th. We'll be in Sheldon for that. So as far as the SU Board Representative Report, we, this was our April, our April meeting. We reorganized. In that meeting, Vern did the spotlight. He did a great overview of kind of all the summer projects going through each school, both in NMV and ER. I mean, it was incredibly thorough, very helpful to see that kind of big picture. We're so fortunate to have him at the helm and kind of relieve our principals of the onerous work of managing these projects. I can't even believe we used to do this kind of just as our small boards with our principals shouldering that, so.
And now they can take that time and support teaching and learning in our schools and not have to figure out like boilers and
Yeah.
you know, fuel tanks and things like that.
And he's had a lot in his play. He recognizes the need to start in the next year or so doing that kind of long-term, you know, the short-term, the midterm, and then the longer-term kind of facilities plan. So that's kind of forthcoming. But he has the summer season very well mapped out. There's a lot going on in all the various schools. Sandy, I was happy to hear he talked about the precipice of doom in the corner. That's been an issue since my son was, you know, in kindergarten.
That's incredible. The back corner of the playground, all the trees are falling.
Yes.
It's actually town land, but it's so close to the playground.
It's been a complicated, thorny situation for as long as I can remember. Since I had a kindergartner in this building.
I hadn't been out there for a while, but we went out because we want to extend the fence. And I looked in and I thought it had remained the same. But there was a new tree because it still had green needles on it. So there was another new tree that had fallen in.
It's all the other day, it must come out this winter.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's what we used to call it back in the day, the precipice of doom. So that was on Vern's list. So it seems as though there's going to be a fence and it'll be a much improved situation. and it'll be a much improved situation, among other many important infrastructure projects across the SU. So that was the spotlight. Oh, and then he's been really working hard on these efficiency Vermont grants for all the upgraded LED lighting across all the schools. And that's been a very comprehensive and ultimately, you know, it'll have a great result for our lighting needs and efficiency and cost savings. So he highlighted that. Morgan gave an update on the RFPs for our alternative program space, which is looking promising and moving forward.
So where is that? To that, just to work.
Where is that Enesburg marketplace?
Um, so it's where the laundromat is, next to the laundromat there in the Walgreens section. So two of our programs, Steps and Trail House, there's about 3,000 square feet. They're going to move into that marketplace space. It's gonna work out pretty nicely for those programs. And then the taps from Richford Junior Senior High School is gonna be shifting to Enesburg Middle High School. So that puts it into a more central place. So we have some students in both Sheldon and Bakersfield and other communities that are a little further away from Richford that now will be able to readily access that program.
It's tapped sixth grade and up.
Yes.
So that's really good movement on that. We approved calendars, including the new early release days. I don't know if you, I mean, I think that we did discuss those, Lynn. But I don't know if you wanna remind the board about the early release days.
I think we approved it at this board too. But there weekly will be a one-hour early release on Tuesdays so that there'll be some additional time for teachers to have planning meetings, planning time, collaborative meetings, and some professional learning time in their schools. So it's one of the things that we've lost as a result of not having any substitute teachers who in really high expectations, there are a lot of pressures on our system right now, especially with the shifts around Act 173 and the professional learning that needs to go along with that. And that captures us a little more time with our teachers, so I was appreciative that they approved that.
Yeah, that's great. We ratified the support staff agreement, which is done at all, both districts and at the SU level. And then we gave a little update on our teacher-staff appreciation, which maybe Courtney, who's done, Miranda, Courtney and I worked on it together. But Courtney has certainly done the bulk of the heavy lifting, thank you so much. I wanna share an update on the teacher-staff appreciation.
Sure, for NMV, I have reached out to all four restaurants. So we have Cult Halo Catering, I always forgot. The Phoenix House, Cafe Oma, and the Abbey. So I have been in contact with the Phoenix House and the Abbey. The Abbey already has their gift cards ready, so I will get those tomorrow morning. And the Phoenix House, I am getting those probably tomorrow as well. He's going to deliver them to me. I have not been able to reach out, contact Cafe Oma and Cult Halo Catering yet.
She's closed.
Yeah, I did leave a voicemail. I'm hoping that she listens to it so I can get the gift cards out next.
Courtney, I'll send her a message too, since I forgot, right? They're closed for their spring cleaning, as is every other restaurant in Montgomery right now.
Yeah, all at the same time?
All pretty hot.
You can't get takeout in Montgomery right now.
It's a food desert.
We are, for all these restaurants we have, and they're so many closed right now.
But if I can get in touch with those two restaurants, then I will. We walked out actually because for some weird reason, Lynn and I don't know why, but Staff Appreciation Week is next week? We thought it was this week, but it's not.
It's always the first week of May, always.
So I have an extra week, so I'm hoping that I'll be able to deliver all of the gift cards in both districts by the end of next week.
We just told them they might get love across two weeks.
How many do you need for a month?
It's been a tough year all the better.
I need thirty.
All right, well, that's great.
I feel like I gained five pounds in the last.
I saw some of the photos, they looked, that looked amazing, that was quite the spread.
Oh, it's still going, it's every day, we're getting something else.
Wonderful, love it.
PTO is going above and beyond.
And so that is it for the SU Board Report unless anyone else would like to add something. So we have two executive sessions. We'll need to go into one, come out of it, go into another, come out of it. So we can excuse non-board members, guests.
Like to keep Morgan?
Yes, we should keep Morgan. And Sandy for the discussion. One, Sandy, does that work for you? Could stay for that? All right, great. So, thank you, we'll stop recording. Oh, I'm gonna make a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel. We'll do that by roll. John?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Miranda?
Aye.
Arlene?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
And Mary is an aye.